Ethics Board, which is...
I understand, but it doesn't... If there's an executive... I'm just asking. It says exec... and I didn't disturb counsel. It says Executive Session Quasi Judicial Deliberation. Okay? I don't know if that's the issue involving the complaint or a sideline issue.
That's a general right. There are House Counsel...
Good. Thank you. There will be no executive session on the ethics complaint, Mr. Hamer. It's going to be done in open session.
Okay. How was it able to articulate it?
I understand. I understand.
In the long time that I'm... It's supposed to be written with sufficiency that it's understandable. And I don't know if the quasi-judicial is related to the complaint.
It is associated with each of the hearings that go before it, so you know... So you have like letter... or excuse me. You have letter C. And then down below, the executive session. In case counsel wants to discuss anything in confidence associated with the application.
That would clarify under the required sketch. And had it been, I wouldn't have bothered getting it to happen. So maybe next time we could, you know... Because I do follow this...
That's nice, but we're not going to say not going to be an executive session. Simply an open hearing. I think the notice and the listing on the agenda is absolutely correct and absolutely appropriate. So thank you for looking into it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Do I need a motion for the City Council to convene as the Board of Ethics? Second?
Second.
We'll call, please.
Bernado?
Yes, I have this statement under my jacket.
Yes.
Let's go, Ray.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Staying.
Miles?
Yes.
Torres?
All abstained because I wasn't there that day to witness what actually happened.
Yes, public hearing is now open. First of all, I want to remind that public participation is not allowed in this hearing because this is strictly a council, public council hearing. Everything will be done in open session. I want to remind people from the audience that outbursts will not be tolerated. The first will be a warning. The second will be asked or escorted out of the building because we need to do this in the proper manner. At this point, I want to remind everyone that Ms. Torres, because she was not here at that particular meeting, she has decided that she will not participate in the meeting. Also remind counsel for us to not be biased in any way during the hearing. So please, we remind you of that. Counsel, would you please read the complaint?
Mayor, if I could, please. I would like to have Ms. Lopez as the clerk read the complaint that was offered by Councilor Bernado, if I could, please. Thank you. Just read that.
To Mayor Phil Rico, Les Downs City Attorney, Sheriff James Casillas, Los Angeles County, regarding ethical complaint. In regards to the incident that occurred on April 20th, 2017, and at an executive session for the Trinada City Council at City Hall between the hours of 5:30 p.m. and 6:30 p.m., those present at this meeting were consultant Beth Tatarco, Mayor Phil Rico, Councilwoman Michelle Miles, Councilman Carlos Lopez, Councilwoman Pat Fletcher, Councilman Anthony Matei, and myself. City Attorney Les Downs was also present. I, Joe Bernado, was involved in a discussion during the executive session, which subject I cannot divulge. When Councilman Matei, in full Los Angeles County uniform with weapons, said, "You're acting like Mr. Cool. Get your foot off the chair." In response, I stated that I had a severe backache and that that's why my foot was on the chair. His response was, "Stand up," in a very loud, commanding voice. I then said, "Be quiet." Councilman Matei then rose from his council seat and approached me in a very threatening manner, and as he did so, I stood up. Mayor Rico intervened and instructed us both to sit down. Councilman Matei then said to me, "If it wasn't for you, we wouldn't be in executive session discussing a new city manager. You're the reason Gay England left." This is not the first time that Councilman Matei has said this to me regarding Gay England. Sincerely, Joe Bernado.
I'd like the record to reflect that the general denial has been given or will be given by Mr. Matei. Please. Would you like for me to reach the line? No, yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Ethics. Mr. Downs, I was assigned to be parables of the fight by Mr. Tenoy and Mr. Son. I apologize that this has to be at your inaugural meeting, but such is life. Councilman Bernado. There is much to say in a very limited time. I have taken the time to have a very carefully crafted and worded statement. Bear with me and read to you, and perhaps interject when appropriate. There is no one in this room who takes more seriously than I do. The allegations of the charges filed against me by Councilman Joe Bernado. The assertion he makes votes through the essence of my reputation in public service and rattled the public's confidence and trust in me and this council as well. You may recall that I one time mentioned in a political debate that the only thing any of us have to offer is our reputation. And when they etch our headstones, that dash between the birthdate and the date of death will represent that reputation. Having lived here all of my life in a rather public existence because of my Colorado State Patrol profession and the community services, many of you, if not all of you, have firsthand knowledge of my professional character, skills, and reputation. Like all of you, I take ownership of my reputation and diligently work to change, protect, and defend it. And this matter brought by Mr. Bernado and his supporters presents a serious vindictive and malicious threat to me professionally and personally. At first blush, it would seem that the complaint you have just had read to you and the charges asserted by Mr. Bernado are worthy of legitimate concern and mandate your attention. I submit to you that you, as the Board of Ethics, but as members of our City Council, have already come to that conclusion once before. Because on May 16th, Councilman Lopez's motion to dismiss this complaint is frivolous, died for lack of a second. So it brings us to this point tonight of a formal hearing. On the other hand, the procedure tonight assures me the right of due process to defend myself against allegations brought against me. In the next few minutes, I hope to demonstrate to your satisfaction that this complaint is totally without substance or merit and was filed solely as harassment as prohibited by Section 7A of Article 7 of the Municipal Code, ordinance number 1797, effective 8/26/05, by Mr. Bernado and those persons who influenced and manipulated him. Before delving into the essence of my defense presentation, I want to set the stage, so to speak, discussing two types of evidence, presenting a timeline for reference, and thirdly, entering into the record two social media postings which are directly related and at the heart of this complaint. To differentiate between direct and circumstantial evidence, consider the following. If you saw raining, it would be direct evidence if afterward you were to testify to the fact that it had rained. If you hear the pitter-patter on the roof and when it stops, you go outside and everything is wet. The air is fresh and clean and crisp, and there is noticeable humidity in the air. That would be circumstantial evidence that it had rained. I harp it back to my time in recruit school when Charles Ricchio was then the Colorado State Patrol legal advisor and a very prominent instructor in legal matters throughout my entire academy experience. Judge Ricchio always considered, and his trademark phrase was, "The totality of the circumstances." I stand before you tonight to present the totality of the circumstances. Circumstantial evidence means that a careful consideration of the totality of these circumstances can lead a reasonable person to logically conclude that a particular event exists, occurred, or is likely true. In terms of its missibility in court, and certainly for our, your purposes here tonight, neither is given stronger consideration over the other. Because in certain situations, each is a powerful demonstration proving a point in its own right. Except Ms. Torres. All of you have your memories of the April 20th meeting, which is the subject of this hearing, to serve as direct evidence for your consideration during your later deliberations. On the other hand, I will present a series of circumstantial observations which, when considered in totality, will offer compelling circumstantial evidence for you to also consider during those deliberations. So that I can stay focused and direct this presentation to a reasonable logical conclusion. Please allow me to present the following timeline as a roadmap for what I'm about to say. April 20th, that was the day of the executive session with Ms. Tatarco of the Austin Peters Group. You may recall that the city had engaged the Austin Peters Group to help with our compensation study. As a result of that, they gave us a lucrative offer when we were in need of a search for a new city manager by 50% reduction of his competitive bids. So we engaged them. In preparation for the search by the Austin Peters Group, they met with us collectively, all of us, and discussed what our interests were, what our concerns were. Then they met, then Ms. Tatarco came down to treat that and met individually with us so that she could get a better feel for what our personal preferences were. And then she went off to do her business. Actually, what happened is all applications were directed to the Austin Peters Group, and then per our request, they began to vet the applicants. I did, in fact, and there was on April 28th, a newspaper article featuring our mayor and an announcement or information released about this process, which I'm about, what I'm describing now. Suffice it to say that I was the author of this release, except for the mayor's paper. But be that as it may, this was made public. At that time, based on Ms. Tatarco's presentation or investigation with us or meeting with us, it was determined that we were looking for someone with five years' experience in local government management, someone with a master's degree in public administration from an accredited university, professional experience in smaller, growing communities, expertise in finance and economic development, and an ICMA, that's International City and County Management Association membership. Additionally, counsel, require two additional screening qualifications. Evidence of a stable employment history, progressive career development, and an unblemished record of leading with integrity. That having been said, it all came together on April 20th in an executive session in this room when we met with Ms. Tatarco. She, at that time, was going to present their work product, a notebook that had the finalists determined by their screening procedure. We had each been provided a copy of that work product while in advance of that meeting so as to acquaint ourselves with what she was about to say and formulate questions should the need arise. Be that as it may, that happened on April 20th, and we all knew what was going to be said on that day. April 24th was the day that Mr. Bernado's first complaint with copies to Les Downs, Mayor Rico, and Sheriff Casillas was submitted. At that time, for Councilor Downs, it was found to be a fatally flawed document in that it was not verified, meaning it was not notarized. And at that time, Mayor Rico and I, when he informed me that there was this pending complaint, indicated that it was surprise to Mayor Rico and me that the author had chosen to include Sheriff Jim Casillas. Given that this was an executive session situation, it seemed totally inappropriate that Sheriff Casillas would be included in that document. But that happened on April 24th. On April 27th, that was the day with, at which time, based on information I will provide very shortly, that a Facebook posting authored by Sunny Leoni appeared on Facebook. In that, Mr. Leoni brought, thought it was a good idea to present and post the contents of Mr. Bernado's complaint to Facebook, or the essence of that complaint. I don't know. On April 28th, Councilor Downs arranged for a sit-down meeting between me and Mr. Bernado as a good-faith effort to meet and discuss Mr. Bernado's concerns in an attempt to resolve these issues at the lowest possible level, which is what we always try and do. Okay? Mr. Bernado was going, I mean, Mr. Downs was going to mediate the, or facilitate the mediation. Mr. Valentine was going to be present as the interim city manager. I arrived promptly and waited for 20 minutes past the appointed hour, and Mr. Bernado, without notice, failed to appear as apparently he had agreed. So it tells me, in my mind, and I'm giving you my opinion of things, of course, that's how this whole thing can speak to, that the motive of this entire episode was not to mediate and resolve conflict difference, but rather to drive this forward as we are now here. May 1st, that's the day that Mr. Bernado filed his second complaint. This time it was verified, meaning that it was notarized. Again, copies to Mr. Downs, Mr. Rico, and Sheriff Casillas. And I am told by Mr. Downs, he instructed Mr. Bernado during that time period, "Do not send that to the sheriff." Because at that time, we were of the opinion that the information being presented was confidential information from an executive, information protected by confidentiality of that meeting. Okay? Subsequently, there was a ruling by Tammy Tenoy from SIRS, which kind of altered all that. Based on those two issues and the fact that information was provided to Sheriff Casillas, I was of the mind, I'm filing a complaint as well, in that personal information or protected information was made public. Okay? May 13th is the day that I learned that 81082, I understand, authored by you, Mr. Hamer, is that correct?
It was authored by one of our staff.
Okay. Posted his comments about this situation to his Facebook account. So now it's gaining traction, it's multiplying, and the rumor mills are going crazy in town as it does. May 16th was the day the council assembled for its regular meeting to hear and discuss Agenda Item Number 7.0, Mr. Bernado's complaint. And it was decided for this matter to be set forward to tonight because of the lack of second through Mr. Lopez's motion to dismiss. Excuse me. May 18th, significant day. That's the day that Councilor Downs notified me that Tammy Tenoy, our SIRS consultant, had ruled that the content of Mr. Bernado's complaint was acceptable to be made public. However, this was three weeks after the posting by Mr. Leoni on April 27th on Facebook, and apparently he was without authorization, as provided by Ms. Tenoy, on May 18th to share and make public that information. With that timeline, let me proceed. Bear with me as I read the unedited Facebook posts from Mr. Leoni and Mr. Hamer as a matter of record. And I got to bounce around here a little bit because some of them are out of sequence. But on April 27th, at 9:00 p.m., that, by the way, this all, we are two days short of nine weeks when this poignant question was asked by Mr. Leoni when he made his Facebook post. What is going on with Trinidad City Council? Who attacked who? At 9:31, J.J. Rivera posts WTF. At 9:34 on that same day, Mr. Leoni clarifies, somebody on council attacked another council member. J.J. Rivera responding at 9:35 says, "Wow, these are the leaders of our community." Okay? Then Tiffany Craig-Wards gets involved, and she says, "Get rid of them both. We need people who can run the community. If they can't get along, how the hell are we supposed to trust them in making the right decision?" At April 28th, at 10:47 in the morning, Bernadette Baca Gonzalez, former city ma, uh, mayor, sends a message to Sunny in the same thread that says, "Sunny, I just sent you a personal message." A private message, I'm sorry, a private message. Thereafter, on April 28th, the same day, at 4:41 a.m., this is early in the morning, Bernadette was up reading this. "Oh, my gosh, what happened? Private message me, Sunny." He apparently did not, so later that same day, she private messaged him. I got out of sequence there. Okay, on April 28th at 2:33 p.m., Carol Phillips from Big O. "Since we count count on city government to ever let the dirty little truths escape to the people whom they are supposed to be representing, can you state just the facts of what happened between whom and inform those who have an investment in this and life..." I think she means "live" in this community. "At which time, at 4:32 p.m., Sunny Leoni responds, 'Have not found out yet.'" But the, I think he means "what the hell happened," but it's hypothesized and means "heal." "But what the hell happened, but a few people are asking many questions. Maybe the truth will come out soon. This info came from a restraint," I believe he means restaurant, "from a city employee who was overheard by a waitress." You were the only city employee in the room that day. At this point, I must interject a personal opinion. Recall the movie A Few Good Men. Tom Cruise, acting as Lieutenant Daniel Caffey, a Navy attorney, is questioning Colonel Nathan Jessup, a Marine Colonel, played by Jack Nicholson, and he's demanding the truth, as are the folks in this thread. "I submit for your consideration as Jessup answered Caffey, you can't handle the truth." Okay? Sunny goes on to say, at 6:48 p.m., this is going on on April 30th now, we're three, several days into this. "It looks like Matei came after Joe Bernado after Joe stood up to stretch his back." You were there, you don't look like it. Patty Amador interjects at 9:02 p.m., people stay up late when you read Facebook. She says, "Same old Trinidad." Cliff Madrid, on April 29th at 7:30 in the morning, got up really early to read this. He comments, heard Anthony, he's got my name spelled wrong, but I understand what he meant, meant me, and Joe Bernado spelled your name wrong, too. He just mentioned his names. Okay? Thereafter, on April 29th at 7:45 a.m., Mr. Leoni says, "Could very likely be, you are not the only one to say this. We'll know soon if there's a connection with this episode and the sheriff's department." And that does make the puzzle coming together right now. How did this become a puzzle between what happened here on April 20th and the sheriff's department? Other than you're trying to make it one. Okay? Thereafter, I mentioned we called someone Lopez, that this was on Facebook. Had you seen it? No, he hasn't. Excuse me again. On April 29th, I'm sorry, on May 12th, a couple weeks later, Councilman Lopez says, "As a member of City Council, I would like to state for the record that no one on City Council was physically attacked in chambers since I have held this seat. I wish those spreading this rumor would get their facts straight before they start a rumor mill." That was May 12th, 11:28. Sunny Leoni responds to Mr. Lopez at 3:50 p.m. saying, "Carlos, I guess you are meaning out of order by council member, and mine are two types of thought. Maybe you should be in that member's thought. No rumor, no straight facts." I suspect, the point you're trying to make is we need to appreciate Mr. Bernado's feelings and opinions, and I do. Thereafter, on May 12th at 5:47, Mr. Lopez responds, "Maybe they should consider the position." "Please do continue at times. Please make sure to be objective and to try and leave these emotions in the chambers when we convene. That's what I learned right away from Mr. Bernado on one of my first retreats." Okay? That was the end of Mr. Leoni's thread, at least at the time of this printing. If there are new additions to it, I don't have them, or it may have been, already been deleted. Hang on. Subsequently thereafter, I thought Mr. Hamer, but apparently a member of Mr. Hamer's staff, having a propensity for controversy, felt it appropriate to weigh in with his, their opinion about the facts that they could not have had any direct knowledge. And it reads, the following is a complete text of a Facebook post. This is an All Things Special Report. Trinidad City Council Member Anthony Matei raises cane in an executive session last month. So see, we're drawing this on, this was in April, no, we're in May, we're picking it last month. Okay? Here we go. Give me a minute. Give me a brief thread. All Things 81082 has received information that Trinidad city, city member Anthony Matei allegedly physically threatened his colleague, council member Joe Bernado during a closed-door executive session meeting last month. Reports indicate Trinidad Mayor Phil Rico stepped in between Councilmember Matei and Bernado to prevent an alleged attempted assault on the City Council Member Bernado. City Council Member Anthony Matei was attired in his Los Angeles County Sheriff's uniform and wearing a sidearm. Research conducted by All Things 81082 indicates that it was highly improper for Deputy Sheriff, City Council Member Anthony Matei to wear his uniform while performing functions in his official capacity as a City Council Member. Reports indicate that a Mrs. Beth Tatarco with Austin Peters Group was an eyewitness to this incident. She was at this executive session to aid the city of Trinidad in its vetting process search to find a new city manager. Note, the city became the Austin Peters Group of Fort Collins to assist the city in finding a new city manager. Councilmember Liz Torres was absent during this executive session at issue. Reports indicate that during this executive session, ethics-minded City Council Member Joe Bernado expressed his concerns that the City Council was illegally making decisions behind closed doors and away from the prying eyes of the public. Reports indicate that during this executive session, Councilmember Anthony Matei became especially angry and upset that Councilmember Bernado appeared too relaxed as Bernado was rescuing a leg on Councilmember Liz Torres's empty chair. Apparently, Councilmember Bernado attempted to explain to Councilmember Matei that his medical needs for raising his leg and elevated it on the chair. It is widely known that Councilmember Bernado is disabled and uses a cane. Reports indicate that during this executive session in question, City Council Member Anthony Matei lost his temper, jumped out of his chair, armed and in his deputy's uniform, and charged in the direction of Councilmember Bernado. Bernado stood up and raised his cane in self-defense. Reports indicate Mayor Phil Rico was able to intervene and prevent Matei from assaulting Bernado. Calm was eventually restored. Reports indicate City Council Member Joe Bernado has since filed, one, an ethics violation complaint, and, two, an improper conduct complaint with the Los Angeles County Sheriff, Jim Casillas, against Councilmember Anthony Matei. Trinidad City Council, give a clue. You cannot assert, invoke, or hide behind executive session privilege to hide criminal behavior. City Council Member Joe Bernado said no comment when contacted about this incident. More to come. Here are All Things 81082's original related Facebook posts. All Things 81082, 29 April 2017, Facebook post. Answers needed for transparency. Update with a fourth question. Was the new hiring, was the hiring of the new Trinidad city manager illegally predetermined in a recent behind-the-close-door executive session? Has City Council Member Anthony Matei been illegally wearing his Los Angeles County Sheriff's uniform to City Council and executive session meetings? Are ethics-minded city counselors being physically threatened beyond the prying eyes of the public in behind-the-door executive sessions? And did the mayor intervene to prevent a physical altercation between another city council member when councilman, counselor Matei lost his hair-trigger temper in a closed-door executive session? More posts to follow. It says that Mr. Bernado denied comment, but I was never asked for my comments. Be that as it may. Councilwoman Miles, at our meeting on May 16th, you asked a poignant question about how this information got on here, and you would again tonight ask that question. Let's be deductive reasoners and examine the circumstantial evidence to answer your question, considering the totality of all circumstances. There were eight people in the meeting. Six were City Council Members excluding Ms. Torres. City Attorney Les Downs and the Austin Peters Group representative Beth Tatarco were present. You did not put this information out, or you wouldn't be asking about it. I certainly would not have put it out, such incriminating information about myself. I doubt to Ms. Tatarco for any... I doubt that Ms. Tatarco for any reason had any prerogative to disclose any information. Councilor Downs was the only city employee, as mentioned in Mr. Leoni's thread, in the room, and he vehemently has denied sharing any information. Mr. Lopez was surprised to know that Mr. Leoni had posted the information and given back response, as I have just read. So I wouldn't think that Carlos had a hand in this information getting out. Mayor Rico, you and I went to high school together, and you told me that you were very concerned about the city's reputation, and in fact, you were as shocked as I when we saw that Mr. Bernado had sent this complaint to Sheriff Casillas. So I very seriously doubt that you, sir, had anything to do with putting this information out for public identification on the internet. Ms. Fletcher, as a law enforcement colleague, you've sit next to me and you and I have strong feelings about the success of the city and this council. I certainly do not believe you would have said anything. In consideration of the totality of the circumstances, Ms. Miles, we are left with only one reasonable, logical, and circumstantial conclusion. Who, we ask, is the only person but motive, opportunity, and the known associations to have shared this information? Before I get into the next part, let me make an editorial observation. I would not have expected...